Counselors, are we ready?
Counsel will come to order. I'll rise and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence in honor of our veterans, servicemen and women, and those who have given the ultimate sacrifice. Thank you. Clerk will call the roll.
Okay. Anderson, Counselor Anderson?
Yes.
Counselor Kamel?
Here.
Counselor Condon?
Here.
Counselor Crowe?
Here.
Counselor Matheson?
Here.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley?
Here.
Counselor Sika?
Yes.
Counsel Spurrier is absent. Counselor Winslow?
Here.
Counsel President Di Maria?
Here. Under the provisions of the open meeting laws, for those of you in attendance, please be informed that there will be audio/video recordings of this meeting by MATV. I've not been advised of any other recordings, so thank you, MATV, and first order of business.
The Community Preservation Committee will appear before the council to make a presentation.
Thank you, welcome. Come right up to the podium.
Thank you. How's that, good?
Yep.
Do I say my name in?
Sure.
Yes, Julianne Orsino, Chair of the Malden Community Preservation Committee. Address or no?
If you'd like, that's great.
If De Wiley Street. I'd like to start with thanking the council for this opportunity to come in and give you a quick update on what the committee's been doing for the past, I guess almost year and a half now. I also want to take a moment and thank the committee. We have a few of the members here with us tonight. It has been truly an honor to be able to work with these folks. They are extremely committed, really hardworking, talented, and very passionate about the Community Preservation Act here in Malden. So everything that we've accomplished, really, it's been this team that's really worked hard to make that happen. Just to start, wanted to tell you folks a little bit about our deliverables that we've completed so far. In 2018, we had one public hearing, and we held that hearing to gather feedback from the community to make sure that we had a true understanding of what the public was looking for for our plan. We had six additional public outreach meetings. We did that all around the city and had different levels of involvement from the residents. And to date, we've had 29 public committee meetings. So tonight will be our 30th, so happy 30th, everyone. Our high-level deliverables that we've actually created are the CPC Plan, and that's the document that sort of is an overview of what we plan to do. It's a living document. Every year, we will be making updates to it. There's always room for process improvements. We have had tremendous feedback from some of you folks, as well as the community, of how we can make our process better. We very much appreciate that, and we'll be making those changes within the plan over the next year. We decided to follow a pre-application process. We didn't want people going through the heavy lift of doing a big application just to find out that they don't actually fit in with the CPA law. So we created a two-page pre-application form, and we had 20 pre-applications from the community, which is really very amazing. The wonderful thing is, there are three areas, focus areas, and we received applications in all three, and pre-applications in all three, so that's quite wonderful. We then created an application process and an application form. The application process just closed out recently, September 4th. We received 14 applications, and we're just beginning the process of reviewing those. Additionally, we've created some financial metrics for the finance department within the city. We want to make sure that we're providing effective information for them so that they can help not just us, but the applicants, and make sure that things are funded according to the city's rules. And finally, we have a social media presence. We have Facebook page, Twitter account, which I don't even know what that is, so don't even ask me. And for each of our meetings, we have tailored formal presentations for all the meetings, and that actually was quite a bit of work. Right now, for our FY '19 budget, we have $1.9 million in the reserves. What we have to do is, we have to leave 10% in the three areas, the open space, the historical preservation, and the affordable housing focus areas. So if you take the 1.9 and you subtract the $190,000, that leaves us with about 1.3 for this year. You'll be looking at the projects and making recommendations, and that will fall within that budget. I think that's about it I have. I really did a high level, just wanted to just give you a quick update. And I see that there's potentially some questions.
Yes, thank you, Julianne. Right before we take, all these lights are blinking. If you could just introduce the members that are here.
Absolutely. Yes, going from right to left, we have Ken Entinucci, he's our treasurer. Frank Malice is our vice chair, and Roberto Di Marco is our expert in everything, I guess.
That's great, thank you.
Oh, and Ted, sorry, Ted Louise Jacques.
Yep, and Lisa's here.
And Lisa Solder.
Great, great, that's great.
They've read out.
Great committee. Okay, so first up for questions, Counselor Matheson.
Thank you, and thank you, Ms. Orsino, for that presentation and all your work on the committee. I think that's wonderful. You had mentioned that 14 applications were filed after 20 pre-applications. Is there any intention, I know you've done some social media creating pages and whatnot, any plan to make those applications public so members of the public can see what's being applied for?
That's a great question. One thing that we wanted to be sensitive to is that, as we walk through the applications, if one of them, just to give an example, if there were an application that maybe
It's efficient.
Was not going to make it through this funding cycle, we wouldn't necessarily want to be publishing that or making that public. What I will do is, I will go back and see if that's part of the public information, if we should be doing that, if we should be publishing the full applications. I know that we were not required to publish the pre-apps, but I will find out if we should be publishing the applications.
It's probably not a requirement. We're subject to frequent open-meeting law complaints on the city council, as you can imagine, and we're getting more and more well-versed with this, so I don't think putting it online is a requirement. The requirement is that, when you discuss this public business, that you do it in an open fashion, that you create minutes. Putting it online is just a nice way to let the community know what you're doing and, you know, where the potential funding might go. My only other question was, you mentioned that you had 1.9 million in reserves and 1.3 million eligible to allocate. I understand the 10% requirements, but the way I understood it was, 10% is the minimum that has to be allocated to each area, not necessarily the 10% needed to be held in a reserve account. So what is your understanding of that? That it has to be held back, or?
My understanding is that it was held back, but I certainly, again, I will
Maybe something that we can look into?
I will take that, absolutely, and validate that that's in fact correct.
Okay, and the annual revenues on this account is, what, about $500,000?
I think it's about seven.
Seven hundred?
Between, I'll say between six and seven.
Is that including the match?
The match changes with each year.
Right.
And I believe this past year, I thought I saw Mr. Randigan, was 10%?
10, down from 15, which is down from 20. It's going in the wrong direction.
I know that the coalition has been working very hard with the legislature to try to increase the amount of money that the state is putting into this.
Right, by adding to fees.
Yes.
Yep, understood. So when do you think you'll make some determinations on the applications that are pending before you? I imagine you have plenty of time to do it, I'm not trying to rush you or anything like that, especially, you know, I'm obviously interested in a lot of these applications. When do you think you'll be making determinations?
So one thing that we're not doing is, we're not tracking to a date. What we really want to do is make sure that we take our time and we answer all questions, and we give each applicant the opportunity to address any questions we have and bring their application up to the standard for the national law and for the CPC Plan. So right now, we don't have a date in mind, but we are working diligently to make sure that we review them all and review them all effectively.
And this will end with a public hearing, where the public can hear about the applications that you've considered for approval? Is that part of the process?
I don't believe that's part of the process, again, we can
So maybe that happens on the council level?
So the process would be to make the recommendations to the mayor's office and then to the city council. But again, we can take that as a recommendation to maybe do a bigger meeting, because as you stated, these are all reviewed within the public meetings.
Yep.
So if folks are interested.
Yep.
But that's, again, another great point that we will
Just more for us to consider.
That's right.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel.
Thank you, Counsel Matheson. Counselor Kamel?
Hi, thank you very much for giving us all that information. I just had one quick question in terms of the 14 applications. You might not discuss individually what they are. I was just curious, sort of, you know, what will the acceptance rate be? And so what do those 14 applications, what's the net aggregate ask within those 14 applications for funding?
We haven't done that yet, so we just closed that out on the, we received them on the 4th, and then we met two weeks ago, and what we did is, we did a very high-level organization. We're actually meeting tonight.
Okay.
And we will run through that tonight, so I can get that answer for you.
Yeah, I just was wondering what the top-line ask in all of them were, so, aggregate. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Kamel. Counselor Winslow?
Yeah, I want to thank the committee for all your hard work. I know, you know, one of the things that actually motivated me to run for city council was to make sure we had a hard-working committee made up of citizens, so I really appreciate the work of the council of setting up the committee in the first place, and your work to make this a citizens' committee. I do have one question. I know it's possible to fund a staff person, and as we go from applications to actual implementation, things can even get harder, so I don't know if that's something the committee is making any recommendations to the mayor's office, and some of the funds can be used to allocate to that, and I think it's just important to keep you, you know, focused on higher-level things than minutia that might come in individual projects, so that's just one of the questions.
So we all agree, and we actually have hired a part-time admin.
Okay, excellent.
And she started a little bit ago.
All right.
And she has a very strong background in CPA.
All right.
So we're very excited to have her onboard.
Excellent, great to hear that, so things are falling into place. Excellent, great, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Winslow. Counselor Condon?
Thank you, Madam President. Julie, do you mind giving us a brief overview of where the process is going from here? I know you said the projects will go up to the mayor. Does he have to give you approval, and then you can come for the city council to vote?
So
Is that the way it will work?
Yes, so it would be the same process as with you all, is that the mayor could approve, reject, or reduce the funding, and then we would bring that to you and go through the same process. And that's only on the recommended projects.
So he has to initiate the financial funding
Correct.
To the council and the finance committee?
Correct.
Which will bring it back to the city council?
Yes.
Okay. I want to thank your committee. I know you're a very active committee, because many nights we walk by you there, I don't know what time it is to get done, but you put in a lot of hours
It's late.
In these committees, so thank you very much for your commitment.
Thank you, thank you, Counsel.
Thank you, Counsel Condon. Counselor O'Malley?
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you for all the hard work that you and the committee have done. To that point, and I apologize if I just missed the answer, did you say that there was a date when we would be recommended a budget, or we're still determining?
We're still determining. We don't want to rush to a date. We want to really make sure that we follow the best process for the applicants and for the city. We are meeting twice a month over the next couple of months to provide as much time as we can. If we're, I haven't talked to the committee about this, but if we need more time knowing these folks, I'm sure they would give it. And our goal is to try to get this done in a timely manner.
Do we need to, is there anything that we need to do before, you know, we approve next year's 2020 budget? Is that kind of how we anticipate this happening? Are we going to be improving this as part of the overall budget, or is this kind of separate from that? So it could come out in November, December, or come out in January or February versus, like, when we usually approve it, in July? Do you know what I mean?
So this is FY '19? I believe you already approved FY '19, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so this is for FY '19, but it's a great point, that we want to make sure that we're not running into your dates that where you're doing additional work on the budget. So we will certainly keep that in mind.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel O'Malley. Counselor Anderson?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Julie, thank you and the committee for the hard work that you've put into it, as has been mentioned by those speaking before me. Yeah, we do see you all spending a lot of time in these meetings after we've had meetings with the council. I just want to say that I like the approach that you've laid out here this evening, in saying to us that you were more interested in having a good process, in a thorough process, as opposed to setting an arbitrary date and trying to force things into that. I think that's exactly the right way to do it. This is important stuff that you're working on, so keep doing it in the direction that you're doing. Again, thanks to all of your committee members for your hard work, and we're looking forward to some good outcomes out of this, see, this is the Community Preservation Act. So thank you very much, Julie, and to all of the committee members. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel.
Thank you, Counselor Anderson. And from the chair, I do want to, first off, say thank you for delaying your meeting tonight to come in front of us, so I won't keep you too much longer. I think you've held the bar really high as your first year, and I applaud each and every one of you for your hard work and dedication. And again, I'll tell you, you're a dream team, so I'm real proud of you, and thank you very much for coming this evening.
Thank you, Counsel. Thank you all.
Next order of business?
Approval of the minutes for
No public hearing, do we have any public comments?
No, nobody here for public.
Okay, so there's no one that signed up for public comment, so we go to the next one, thank you.
Approval of the minutes for September 11th of 2018 and September 18 of 2018.
Okay, thank you. On Counselor Murphy's motion to approve the minutes, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. Next order of business?
Madam President, before I continue on, I was wondering if I could take one item out of order. We have Karen Anderson here, she's been working on the city charter.
She just walked in.
And you may have questions for us, so
Certainly, Mr. Clerk, certainly.
Committee report, Rules and Ordinance, Paper 362 of 18, that the mayor and the city council approve the following consolidation of the city charter for publication to residents for use as the basis of prospective charter revisions. That's on page three.
Thank you. So it's page three.
So I don't know
Okay, hold on.
Page, Paper 39918.
Okay, why can I not see this?
Second from the bottom.
Bless you, excuse me. Okay, here we go, okay. My apologies. Okay, on Counselor O'Malley's motion to receive the committee report, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Committee report is received. Counselor O'Malley for the committee. Yeah, hold on, here we go.
Thank you, Madam President. As we discussed when we first sent this into committee, this is purely an administrative cleanup, where we took, you know, hundreds of years of acts of the legislature that were disjointed and in a rough photocopped binder, and through the hard work of Karen Anderson, our city clerk, as well as Sheila Firmano, they worked to take all of these acts and amendments that have occurred over the last few hundred years, and they turned it into this document here that reflects the city charter of Malden. What we now have to do is adopt it, send it to the legislature so that they can review it and approve it, and it'll come back down to us, and this will be our city charter. It is available, or will be available, online, and will also, really interestingly, it has all of the subsections where all the changes occurred. Very hard work, a great document that helps preserve history. And with that, I'd make a motion to adopt, but I'm not looking to stifle any debate, and if anyone wants to hear from Karen Anderson, she is in the room.
I think we'll welcome Karen Anderson to the podium if she would like. Thank you.
Hi. I'd really just like to clarify, this will ultimately go to the legislature after it's been revised and modernized. Right now, it's just going to be the basis for discussion about modernization, so you kind of skipped over the hard work, Counsel O'Malley.
Okay, do I see any lights on the floor, any questions?
This isn't the revision, this is just the consolidation.
This is the consolidation, exactly.
But doesn't this also have to be approved?
No, on the recommendation, the city solicitor, she thought that the best course of action, because there are dates in there, if you've read through it, you'll see dates like commencing in 1933 or commencing in 2011, and that was difficult to format in a way that the legislature would approve in 2018. So her recommendation was that we agree that this is a consolidated charter, which is what we're asking you to do tonight, and use that as the basis for a revision that would be a totally new document that will go to the legislature after it was finalized by the city.
Sounds good.
It's good.
No questions on the floor?
Thank you.
Oh, well, bear with me, Counselor Matheson.
I'm not sure we would have been able to, thank you, Chair, I'm not sure we would have been able to do this without you, Ms. Anderson, and your dedication to the city is just second to none. Thank you so much.
You make me blush.
Okay, so we'll place that on file? Are we moving forward to taking a vote on consolidating this charter?
I'm sorry, old habits die hard. You actually need to adopt.
Okay, thank you, all right. Okay, so on
Go ahead.
Yeah, motion on the floor, on Counselor O'Malley's motion to adopt this. Clerk will call the roll. Hold on, there you go.
Counselor Anderson?
Yes.
Counselor Kamel?
Yes.
Counselor Condon?
Yes.
Counselor Crowe?
Yes.
Counselor Matheson?
Yes.
Counselor Winslow?
Yes.
Counselor Di Maria?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, so on to appointments and elections. Maesary Appointment of Allen Bishop, 42 Loomis Street, Malden, as a constable, term to expire September 22, 2021.
Thank you. On Counselor Crowe's motion to confirm, all those in favor? This one goes to committee?
Committee.
Pardon me, Counsel Crowe.
Refer to personnel and appointments?
Thank you. On Counselor Crowe's motion to refer this appointment to appointments and personnel, all those in favor? Any opposed? Okay.
Counsel's reappointment of Vincent Maglili, 42 Willard Street, Malden, as a member of the Board of Trustees of the cemetery. No confirmation required.
Thank you. On Counselor Crowe's motion to file, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That appointment is placed on file.
Okay, we have petitions and hearings. Outdoor Parking Motel Realty, Inc., 735 Broadway Mall, in 19 spaces, this is new.
Refer to license committee.
Thank you. On Counselor Anderson's motion to refer this petition to license, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Petition is referred. Next order of business?
The next one is motions and orders. Order that in accordance with national law, Chapter 44, Section 54 Okay.
So on to appointments and elections. Maesary Appointment Valen Bishop, 42 Loomis Street, Malden, as a constable, term to expire September 22nd, 2021.
Thank you. On Counselor Crowe's motion to confirm, all those in favor? This one goes to committee?
Committee.
Pardon me, Counselor Crowe.
Refer to personnel and appointments.
Thank you. On Counselor Crowe's motion to refer this appointment to appointments and personnel, all those in favor? Any opposed? Okay.
Counselor's reappointment of Vincent Maglili, 40 Willard Street, Malden, as a member of the Board of Trustees of the cemetery. No confirmation required.
Thank you. On Counselor Crowe's motion to file, all those in favor? Any opposed? That appointment is placed on file.
Okay, we have petitions and hearings. Outdoor Parking Motel Realty, Inc., 735 Broadway Mall, 19 spaces. This is new.
Refer to license committee.
Thank you. On Counselor Anderson's motion to refer this petition to license, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Petition is referred. Next order of business?
The next one is motions and orders. Order that in accordance with National Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, the City of Malden accepts a gift of funds from Roseland Property Company for Overlook Ridge LLC, Roseland, a MacCall company pursuant to site plan review determination dated August 27th, 2018, to be used as ordered for traffic and safety improvements in the immediate and surrounding project area, including bus lanes and Linden Square.
Thank you. Counselor Seeca for the paper?
Thank you. This paper is to accept Roseland's gift of funds to use on some traffic and safety improvements, including the Linden Square bus stop. We're looking to get this ball rolling, so in order for us to have Roseland take care of this for us, then we need to approve this this evening. So, make a motion.
Any questions on the floor before we take that vote? Counselor Matheson?
Thanks. I'm just curious to the sponsor, and I think this is wonderful. It's, I always welcome gifts that can benefit our people and our infrastructure. I guess my question is, have you already gone through a plan as to all the different ways this is going to be implemented to help that surrounding area?
So we do. We've been going back and forth with the engineer the past couple of months. We already have a plan in place, and we look forward to getting it finalized within the next couple of months before the snowfall. You're going to see a drastic change in the Linden Square area at the bus stop.
Okay.
We're going to go from one, being able to house one bus in the bus lane to four.
Great.
So we're hoping that it drastically decreases the traffic flow during AM and PM rush hours.
Well, I am a thousand percent behind reducing traffic flow.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Counselor Anderson.
Yes, I'm all behind this as well. The traffic situation down there in Linden Square has been a problem for some time, and to have a private company recognizing that, and it's some distance away from their property, but it certainly impacts their property. And so being able to get this gift for the City of Malden, I think is very good, and congratulations, Counselor Seeca, on behalf of the city in doing this for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Anderson. Counselor Condon?
Thank you, Madam President. Congratulations to the wide aid councilor. This improvement's long overdue. It's very good that this was done beyond the mitigation formula that we have as a community. So this is a gift that is being put to good use. So thank you, Counselor Seeca.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Condon. Counselor Murphy?
Very short and sweet, great negotiating skills, ma'am. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. And Counselor Winslow?
Yeah, I want to congratulate the work counselor on this. I know traffic on the east side of the city can be horrendous in the morning, and anything we can do. And I think this also shows the potential opportunity, you know, there's other grants and other type of things to look at, bus lanes that other communities are pursuing. Everett's done this, Arlington's done this. So in addition to grants, I think we should, as a council and as a city, look at these opportunities to, you know, speed up our buses, and that also helps speed up our traffic. So thank you very much for sending a good president here, Counselor. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Winslow. And from the chair, I just want to send my true congratulations on this. It's always good to get gifts. I'm all about gifts. So on Counselor Seeca's, on Counselor Seeca's motion to adopt this, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That order is adopted. Next order of business? Thank you.
That the city council create a five-member ad hoc committee to investigate the condition of and safety of the national grid infrastructure in Malden. The committee shall be comprised of three city councillors, the DPW director, and the city engineer or their designees.
Okay, so that was sponsored by Counselor O'Malley and Counselor Kamel, and I'm going to refer this to Counselor O'Malley on the paper. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. I think we all know, and it's, we're very well aware of the tragedy that occurred in the Merrimack Valley with upwards of 70 explosions. Interestingly enough, the day after that explosion, the City of Malden, myself, representatives in the mayor's office, city engineer, and DPW director Bob Knox, had had a scheduled call with the general counsel of the Department of Public Utilities, DPU. Obviously, they had to reschedule that meeting, and we had that today. One of the things that we learned, and it's quite apparent, is that there is very little effective oversight of our natural gas infrastructure in the Commonwealth. And something that I made sure to get across to DPU is that when it comes down to it, it's our residents and it's our public safety officials and first responders that are on the line. It's their safety on the line when something goes wrong. So I personally expect the Commonwealth to do more. I hope that National Grid and other, you know, natural gas providers do more to make sure that their infrastructure is safe. You know, I've heard and from what I've learned, there are over 120 gas leaks, ongoing gas leaks in Malden. I'm sure a lot of our residents know the certain corner in their neighborhood where it smells like gas constantly. I reported one today on Clifton Street. I don't want us to think that this committee is going to be able to solve the safety issue that is apparent, but I would like this committee to dive, do a deep dive into this issue and find out, one, what is the as-is situation? What information do we have? And how can we make sure that the Commonwealth and everyone that is responsible for making sure our pipelines are safe are actually doing their job? I'd appreciate your support. I think this is a very sensitive topic, so I'm completely open for debate and discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor O'Malley. Counselor Kamel?
Thank you. I just want to thank Counselor O'Malley for getting the ball rolling on this and having, you know, scheduled those calls with the DPU and digging in so far. You know, obviously, as a body, we want to be cognizant of committee proliferation. We don't want to give too many committees on too many different things, but for this particular situation, I mean, we, we as a city, we don't know what our final action on this is going to be, but we do need to roll up our sleeves and get some questions answered. I mean, just the preliminary question is, is there even enough oversight? I mean, we were both pretty surprised to find out that there's less really hands-on oversight, and so much more of this is left to these companies that we've seen are making decisions based on bottom line. They're making horrifically inexcusable accidents that result in 70 fires. So what really is the framework? And as a city, we should be on top of this. Counselor O'Malley highlighted, what do we even know right now? What information do we have available? What is accurate? What as-bills exist? What plans exist? How different are they from really what's in the street? How old are these lines? How many leaks do we actually have? Where is there a database that says where those leaks are? What was even done with them? There's no records. You know, you call them, you report something, you call back to find out what happened. All there is is, yeah, we sent somebody out. And there's no, there's no follow-up as to what's actually been done. And then lastly, you know, ideally, we'd like to have, we're not going to solve every issue. We can't be on the hook. We don't have that depth of technical expertise, but we do have, we should have some kind of plan in terms of what are we going to do? What action are we going to take to pursue safety? Do we have to talk to other city councils? Do we have to talk to the state legislature? We have to, and if we have no power right now, we have to slam our fists on the table until we do make somebody notice that these, these things can't, can't be, can't persist in having this little oversight. So again, we ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Kamel. Counselor Winslow?
Yeah, I appreciate Counselor O'Malley and Counselor Kamel putting this paper forward. Malden, as an industrial leader in its day, was one of the leading places to actually have natural gas when we had the coal gas companies. So our gas infrastructure is very old, and not knowing, I mean, just like we, as a city, we found out what's, you know, our lead pipe infrastructure, how we're addressing that. To have that same confidence coming in, I mean, I think that it's important, like I say, right now, you know, one reason why, you know, we voted as a council in support of our local gas workers is because they are at line of defense against, you know, a company that started out as, you know, over on, you know, you know, Commercial Street there, and now it's owned internationally. We just don't have the local touch of that anymore. And so I think it's important that we do understand that. So I would certainly be willing to serve on this committee and apply whatever expertise I can to help out. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Winslow. Counselor Anderson?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I want to commend the counselors for putting this on the docket, but just ask the question about whether or not it wouldn't be more effective to have these folks appear before us here in the city council. In other words, you know, we've got our city engineer, who is a full-time employee, a DPW director who's a full-time employee, who would be going to to get this information. So instead of just giving that information to three city councillors, it seems to me that to have it, you know, debated right here on television, in front of the, in front of the television cameras, and to let us all know just what is going on would be a method, I think, that, not to discount that you didn't want to have the committee, but I think that you might want to consider just having people coming right here before us. Let them tell us. It's not like we're engineers, or any of the three people of the council would know more than what we're going to hear from these subject matter experts. Let them come here and tell us, and let us all then ask them these hard questions of what the hell is going on? Is not, you know, is this going to, the things that happened up in Andover and Lawrence, you know, what kind of situation are we in? So I just throw that out for food for thought. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Anderson. Counselor Matheson?
Thank you. Whenever I speak after Counselor Anderson, I realize that he took a lot of the same thoughts that I was going to say myself, but I mean that as a compliment. We've had situations in the past, particularly with roadwork and water main projects, where we have, as you put it, the subject matter experts come before the council, and we all get educated rather than having to attend a committee meeting and hopefully catch some of that discussion and not have a conflict with one of the other committees we serve on. So something to consider. I'm not saying that having a committee is the wrong way to go about it. The other thing I was observing is that we have eight standing committees. I understand that this would be a special committee, also known as an ad hoc committee, but we do have a standing committee that I believe this would fall within the jurisdiction. Four of our standing committees hardly ever meet, by the way. Cemetery, public property, public safety, and public works. Public works consists of three members. The public works committee shall have jurisdiction over all matters relating to streets, sidewalks, water, sewer, parks, and playgrounds. I believe that this would give the public works committee something to do, and I believe that it falls right within that jurisdiction. The other thing I wanted to add, because I believe it was Counselor O'Malley mentioned the number of gas leaks, about 150 and so? 120. So the Boston Globe reports on this almost annually, and the last time I, it was brought to my attention from one of my residents, I had gone to Bobby Knox, the director of Public Works, and I asked him about these leaks. And he seems to have a wealth of knowledge about it. So leaks are designated either a grade three, grade two, or grade one leak. Grade one leaks are prevalent. They are leaks that are assessed as having no ability to cause harm. They're on a punch list of things to do from the gas supplier, but they are not actively being addressed. Grade two leaks have some urgency, and grade three leaks are the ones that pose a great public danger. And those are all, when you ever see the truck going out there, it's generally a grade three leak that they're going after. So it might not be as alarming as hearing that number 120. Certainly, it's a very, very important subject. I applaud the sponsors for having the idea to get some information on this. I would support having all of those members come before the council, so us and perhaps members of the public can hear that conversation. I would also support referring this to the public works committee. Barring that, I wouldn't oppose forming an ad hoc committee. I just believe it's, it falls within the per number of responsibilities that you find with the public works committee. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Matheson. Counselor O'Malley?
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to add a few additional points of information that I forgot when I was introducing the paper. This came about because I was meeting with the Board of Health, who has been investigating the public health impact of natural gas leaks in the community. They are considering joining on to a letter to Governor Charlie Baker that has already been signed on by something like 20 or 30 communities, including Everett and Medford, basically urging us to do something about the gas leaks in dense urban areas like Malden. There is some studies that show increased asthma rates related to breathing in natural gas. As Counselor Winslow stated, we are very close to Everett. Everett, Massachusetts is one of the few places, I think it's one of two locations in the country. One, there's one in Texas, random part of Texas, in Everett, Massachusetts, where liquefied natural gas can come into the country. So after it enters the country in Everett, it go, the pipelines go through Malden. So we very may well have the oldest gas mains in the country, if not maybe the world. We just don't know that. What we're looking to do is find out more information on that. So when this discussion came up at the Board of Health a week or two ago, they had asked me to create this committee to address this specific issue. And in speaking with the city engineer and the DPW director, who were present today on the phone call with DPU, it's clear that there is a lot of anecdotal evidence and knowledge about the infrastructure because they've been dealing with it for so long, but there's very little hard data, mostly because of the national security concerns, and those are completely valid. But I think that as representatives of the city, our DPW, our city engineers, our police and fire should know whether or not there's a gas lane, a gas line, or some type of leak in the vicinity. God forbid there was a fire or something. They want to make sure that they know. So I'd appreciate the ad hoc committee. I'm also open to taking it up in public works, but I will, I'll defer to the council on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Kamel?
Right. I'll just maybe paraphrase that in a shorter way. I don't care who does it, it needs to get done. So if we want to come up here, if we have a suggestion tonight on to some first steps we can take, some action items we can take, who we'd like to maybe invite here to the full committee, I'd like to discuss that, and then maybe we can talk about tabling this and pursuing it as a full council, if that's what we want to do. Because as long as this gets addressed, I absolutely welcome the support of the entire
Counselor Matheson?
Thank you, Chair, once again. Just a respectful suggestion, perhaps what we do is we ask those persons most knowledgeable, I believe the engineer, the public works director, and perhaps a representative from National Grid, to come appear before us in two weeks. That way, we can all meet with them, garner basic information. But then also do what we are looking to do, which is, after hearing what they have to say, we could take this paper, refer it to the appropriate committee, whether that's a special committee, public works committee, but you can continue to work on it after we all have, you know, basic information before us. And two weeks will be a televised meeting. Members of the public could learn from this as well. Great. Okay.
Okay, thank you. We have just a few more lights. Counselor Murphy?
Yes, I, Counselor Matheson, you got to speak the second time before I get to speak the first time, but I totally agree with what you just said. I think having folks come in and just give us kind of a brief overview of what we know today, similar to what Counselor Anderson said, will be very helpful to us. But I do think after that point, we need to have a focus team that, you know, sees it as kind of their mission to kind of go after and, you know, do a much deeper dive into this, you know, and decide, you know, do we need to get our legislative body involved? You know, what are our next steps? And come up with a game plan for them to bring back to us. I think, you know, so we can make sure that our residents and our city is protected. So I think that, look, I would appreciate having the resident experts come in, give us the overview, and then send the paper to committee. And I think a separate committee at this point is appropriate with, you know, specific counselors on it. So, thank you. specific councilors on it. So, thank you. So.
Thank you, Counselor Murphy. Counselor Condon?
Thank you, Council President. I can support either way, ad hoc committee, uh, DPW. Personally, I think it's a public safety issue. That's what we're going after here, to make sure that the people we represent are safe in our city. So to me, I think it would be, belong with public safety. Public Safety Committee, and dig into that, because really, that's the question we're after. Is the city of Malden safe? How many, like John mentioned, uh, grade one leaks, grade two leaks, grade three leaks? We need to know if our people that we represent are safe. So, that's my position.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Condon. Seeing no further lights, uh, okay. Uh, Counselor O'Malley for the third time.
So if I understand correctly, and feel free to, to shout out, um, we would like to, uh, I'd make, I'd move to invite the city engineer and DPW director to kind of catch us up to speed here at a city council meeting, and a representative from National Grid. Uh, we can also invite the Department of Public Utilities, if they would like to attend, uh, and Chris Webb from the Board of Health, um, to attend and, and catch us up to speed on what is the deal with pipeline safety in Malden. And then at that point, we can discuss how we want to move forward.
Great.
Second.
Great.
So that would be October ninth. Motion to invite those representatives.
Right. Yep, at this point. Okay. So on Counselor O'Malley's motion to invite the specific engineer, DPW, and National Grid representatives, and Board of Health.
Chris Webb.
Yep. Yep, I think I just said that. Yep. Uh, in two weeks, to meet in front of us. All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Thank you.
Be hereby ordained that section four point four one of the, of chapter four of the revised ordinance of nineteen ninety-one be amended, be further amended relative to the allowance use of the expendable trust fund. John Matheson?
Yes, thank you. Counselor Matheson for the paper?
Thank you very much. Yeah, we were just speaking about the expendable trust fund earlier, and, um, I don't know how many members of the public are aware, but we are expanding upon the World War I memorial in Ward Two, Dever Park. I'm not trying to steal your thunder, Counselor Condon. A lot of people have, uh, really taken, uh, a strong interest in this very laudable, uh, project. And, uh, I, I for one, uh, would like to donate to it, but before I did so, I wanted to go back to this ordinance, which we drafted six years ago, because I recall there were a number of conditions and restrictions in how, um, expendable trust funds can be used. And these are funds that go to mitigation. So, uh, when an apartment building gets built, it's, some of, uh, the mitigation money goes back to the city to help out infrastructure. So we have conditions on how this money could be spent, and every ward council has got ideas on how they can help their constituents, whether that's sidewalk repair, or planting a tree, or upgrading a park. Uh, but what I'm proposing is to amend this ordinance, and, uh, I'll move to pass it tonight unless there's objection, uh, to include the words, including but not limited to dedications, memorials, historic markers, and resident communications. I did that because, uh, again, I want, I want to be able to donate from, from my account, as we all have, all us councilors have taken an interest in this, to help out this World War I memorial. Uh, my father was a veteran of World War Two. His father was a veteran of World War One. I think it's wonderful that this memorial is going to be expanded to include every veteran from across the city of Malden, not just the, the Ward Two veterans from World War One. Um, so I'm making a motion, um, and certainly I won't entertain any questions, to amend this section of the ordinance, to add that specific language. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Seconded by Counselor Anderson. Counselor Kamel?
Just a, a clarifying question. I just wanted a little more, what is, uh, resident communications?
I'm sorry, can you activate my microphone?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, no problem. We have the microphones getting activated. Um, so like a butter's notices and things of that nature. Um, I've had things come up in Ward Three, like, uh, Fells Way and Highland, where we want to communicate with people about things that are going on in the ward. Um, and I've, in the past, have gone to the mayor's office and asked for their help in doing this. Uh, we don't, we don't have a budget to do that ourselves. And this is, I think, just another opportunity. We could use this to benefit our wards. I'm, again, open to any suggestions about how this language should read. Uh, my first thought would be to strike all the restrictions, but then again, I mean, we put them in there in the first place because they all mean something to us.
I'll say, Counselor Kamel?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Condon?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, John, uh, for your kind words. Uh, I'm just not sure if, uh, this lang, I'd like to call up our, uh, city controller here to find out if he thinks that, uh, this language is necessary before, uh, us as city council. And we do each have mitigation for ward improvements, uh, within our ward. So I'd like to call up our city controller to see if he feels it's necessary to put this language in.
Okay.
Thank you. Welcome, Chuck Rannigan. Thank you.
Good evening. Um, my opinion, there's certainly no harm in adding clarifying language. You know, right now, it's, the ordinance is specific, but it's certainly still open to interpretation. This is just clarifying that the, the funding could be used specifically for these additional purposes. But, um, I, I think either way, you'd be, you'd be okay.
Yeah, I called Chuck before I raised the mic.
Okay.
Any other questions for, um, Chuck Rannigan? Okay. I'll move to Counselor Murphy.
Thank you. Um, I'm just going to follow on, uh, Counselor Kamel's, uh, comment. And I understand exactly where you're coming from about having to send out large notices to people about infrastructure improvements, et cetera, and the cost associated with it. But resident communications, to me, is extremely broad, and I wouldn't really want to see it used for a resident communication for July fourth. So I'm wondering if we could just amend this to say, resident communications related to approved activities? You know, or something, you know, something within, you know, would have to be associated with --
Infrastructure.
-- infrastructure, or something going on that was approved as the project?
Yes. Are related to those projects?
Related to the above. Yes, related to the above. You know, approved activities related to the above.
I second that motion.
Okay. Yeah. Okay, hold on.
Okay, so I'll say, Counselor Murphy?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so that, that was, um, a motion to amend the amendment.
Yes.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Counselor Winslow. Oh, Counselor Winslow, okay. Thank you. And Counselor O'Malley?
Thank you, Madam President. Actually, I want to thank both, uh, Counselor Kamel and Counselor Murphy for, for talking about this particular topic. Um, my understanding of mitigation, uh, is it's supposed to be used for, like, long-lasting capital improvements. That's why it's for sidewalks, street trees, things like this. Um, and I think that I agree with everything here. I am very hesitant on the resident communications, even under the amended language, um, only because, you know, that's a piece of paper that goes out. That's not a lasting capital improvement to the, uh, community. Um, I, I think that I would be in support of this, uh, but I wouldn't be in support of, of the resident communications. Um, so i- if the amendment doesn't pass, um, I, I would move to strike resident communications and leave the rest of the amendment, um, or the proposed change as is. Thank you.
Okay, so there's no second to that? So we're gonna, Counselor Condon will second that. Okay, hold on. Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I'm trying to figure out when in my, uh, all my years representing Ward Two that I've ever had a problem getting out communication to the neighborhood. Uh, almost every department has some sort of budget to, uh, help us with that. So I think it's unnecessary. I think the council makes a good point, to be honest with you. Uh, I don't see us having to use mitigation money for that particular reason. Uh, the rest of it, I'm fine with, but I tend to agree with Counselor O'Malley on this one.
Okay, so that's a second? So we're going to, um, okay, we're gonna amend the amend of the amendment. Right? Is that correct? Okay, so we're gonna do a roll call vote. And, uh, clerk, could you just read that last sentence as?
We start with Counselor Murphy's motion.
Yep. No, I think it was, it was, no, it was Counselor Matheson's got a second. We got an amendment to that. So which was? Can we, can we read that? I think that was on that paper there. Yep, hold on. There you go.
I don't really, um, relate.
Resident communications related to above activities.
Related to the above.
That should be the first vote. Counselor Murphy's motion is, uh,
Hold on. Yep.
To, uh, to amend by striking?
Yep, hold on.
Matheson actually had a different wording. I had, uh, including but not limited to dedication, memorials, or historic markers, in resident communications, related to approved activities.
Okay.
Or above, uh, to, above, above approved activities. Or activities--
Related to the above, I think you said.
Related.
Related to approved activities is what you said.
Related to approved activities.
Okay, so we're gonna do roll call on that one? Everyone's--
How about related to approved activities under this section?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so it'll be related to approved activities, uh, under this section?
Yes.
All right. So, here we go with the roll call. Counselor Anderson?
Yes.
Counselor Kamel?
Yes.
Counselor Condon?
No.
Counselor Crowe?
No.
Counselor Matheson?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley?
No.
Counselor Sika?
No.
Counselor Winslow?
Yes.
Counselor President Di Maria?
No.
One, two, three, four. We have, uh, five yeses. It's a tie.
It's a tie. So it fails.
Failed.
Okay.
Does not pass.
Right. Now we take the next one?
I take Counselor O'Malley's motion.
Excuse me. Yep.
Okay, uh, we have Counselor O'Malley's motion, seconded by Counselor Condon, to strike, uh, resident communications.
Okay, we're gonna do a roll call on that?
Counselor Anderson?
No.
Counselor Kamel?
Yes.
Counselor Condon?
Yes.
Counselor Crowe?
Yes.
Counselor Matheson?
No.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley?
Yes.
Counselor Sika?
Yes.
Counselor Winslow?
Yes.
Counselor President Di Maria?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. And now we have, uh, Counselor Matheson's motion, include, uh, the, the complete amendment.
This is to adopt the amendment, including but not limited to dedication, memorials, and historic markers.
Okay, Counselor Anderson?
Yes.
Counselor Kamel?
Yes.
Counselor Condon?
Yes.
Counselor Crowe?
Yes.
Counselor Matheson?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley?
Yes.
Counselor Sika?
Yes.
Counselor Winslow?
Yes.
Counselor President Di Maria?
Yes.
That carries.
Very good. That's it. Thank you. Next order of business?
The next order of business, we have a communication from Counsel President Di Maria, Re- Foresty Review Comit, Committee.
Okay. September twenty-fifth, dear city councilors pursuant to paper two forty-seven eighteen sponsored by Counselor Ryan O'Malley and voted on unanimously on May fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen, order that the city council establish an ad hoc committee for the purpose of drafting a recommendation to the Public Works Commission for an updated community forestry program pursuant to section eleven fifty-five of the revised ordinances. I am pleased to announce the councilors that will serve on this ad hoc committee hereby known as Forestry Review Committee, Counselor Ryan O'Malley, Counselor J. Dean Sika, Counselor Steve Winslow. I am further pleased to name the two Malden residents that have applied and met with the approval of the Appointment slash Personnel Committee, and upon confirmation this evening will serve on the Forestry Review Committee, Anthony Palomieri, five Murray Hill Park, and Alex Stein, four fifty-three Medford Street. Mem, meetings shall begin immediately and follow our council rules. Thank you and congratulations.
Great. And then the next one.
Can we have another, um, communication from President Di Maria? Parking Review Committee.
Dated September twenty-fifth, dear city councilors pursuant to paper three sixty-one eighteen sponsored by Councilors Paul Condon and Ryan O'Malley, order that the president of the city council appoint a three or four-member committee to work with the Director of Parking to address resident parking. I am pleased to announce the councilors that will serve on this special committee hereby known as Parking Review Committee. Meetings shall begin immediately and follow our council rules. Counselor Condon, Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Spatafora, Counselor Dave Kamel, Counselor J. Dean Sika. Ex officio members will be called upon for their advice, but their attendance is not required unless requested. They will serve as advisory resources, namely Police Chief Kevin Moles and Traffic Commissioner Chairman Ron Hogan, Parking Traffic Enforcement Department Manager. Parking Review Committee is being formed for the sole purpose of identifying needs and solutions of Malden's parking concerns to be presented to the full city council for consideration. Thank you and congratulations.
Thank you.
From the council president?
Yes.
Oh, sorry.
Next. Uh, please place those on file. Thank you, clerk. And thank you, Assistant Clerk, for reading that.
Okay, we have some committee reports, uh, I think ten of them, uh, from, uh, personnel and appointments. Uh, the first one is paper number th- three-two-four dash eighteen, council appointment of Anthony G. Palomieri, five Mary Hill Road, Malden, as a member of the Advisory Commission on Forestry. Uh, the next one is paper three-two-five eighteen, council appointment of, uh, Alexander Stein, four-three-five Medford Street, Malden, as a member of the Advisory Committee on Forestry. The next one is paper two-nine-four eighteen, uh, confirm mayor's reappointment of Joseph Cicero, Jr., of two-nine-six Charles Street, Malden, to be appointed as a member of the Housing Commission, Historical Commission. Said term to expire July sixteen, twenty twenty-one. The next one is paper two-nine-two of eighteen, uh, confirmation mayor's reappointment of Peter Janney, one-twenty-two Franklin Street, Malden, as a member of the Council on Aging. Term to expire June first, twenty twenty-one. Um, paper number two-eight-seven eighteen, council confirmation mayor's reappointment of Virginia Darity, one-forty-four Malden Street, Malden, as a member of the Council on Aging. Said term to expire June one, twenty twenty-one. Uh, next one is, uh, paper two-eight-eight of eighteen, council confirmation mayor's reappointment of Shu-Leng Chow, forty-seven Madison Street, Malden, as a member of the Council on Aging. Said term to expire June one of twenty twenty-one. The next one is paper two-three-six of eighteen, council confirmation mayor's reappointment of Kevin Alkins, Ten Hillside Road, Tuxbury, Mass., as Inspector of Animals. Said term to expire April thirtieth, twenty nineteen. The next one is paper two-nine-three of eighteen, council confirmation's mayor's reappointment of Robert Knox, Jr., fifty-four Davis Street, Malden, as Director of Public Works. Said term to expire on Ju-, uh, July one, twenty twenty-one. Uh, next one is, uh, paper one-forty-four of eighteen, council reappointment of James O'Brien, six Lockwood Road, Linfield, Mass., Assessor. Said term to expire March first, twenty twenty-one. The next one is paper one-forty-five of eighteen, council's reappointment of Charles Rannigan, one-forty Oakland Street, Malden, as a member of the Council on Aging. Said term to expire June one of twenty twenty-one. Street, Malden, as Controller. Said term to expire 30, 2020.
December 31st, yep. Thank you. On Counselor Crowe's motion to receive the committee report, Counselor Crowe for the committee.
All those in favor? So we, as you see, this committee's been very, very busy trying to catch up on our appointments, so we've had multiple meetings. So the first two that we have is Anthony Palomieri and Alex Stein, who are both in the audience today, appointed to the Forestry Committee, as we just heard about. Both are obers by trade. And Mr. Stein was actually at our tree hearing and really gave quite the presentation that actually the city reached out and he did some other work to save some of the trees. Fifty percent of the trees were saved. So the committee met with these, both these gentlemen, and we're really excited that they've come on board and kind of working with us around forestry. So the committee unanimously recommended confirmation of both these gentlemen, so I asked the council to follow suit.
Okay, we'll do them all sep- these two separately, right? Okay, on Counselor Crowe's motion to move confirmation, all those in favor? Any opposed? So moved, congratulations, gentlemen.
And they have, they're getting right to work. They have a meeting right after here, so... The, so next we met with Joseph Cesario, who is a member of the Historical Commission, and he has been on that commission for the past six years. And he just kind of talked a lot about sort of saving, about the demolition delay ordinance that we put in and how effective that has been, very effective. And as they're pulling some of these things together, and they're also working with the CPA Committee to see about the wall at BB School to be restored. So they're very, they're another active committee. And so unanimously, the appointments of Personnel Committee voted to re- reappoint Mr. Cesario to the Historical Commission. Make that motion.
Thank you. On Counselor Crowe's motion to accept that reappointment, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations.
And we also met with Mr., well, these three together, well, not together, but in two different meetings, Mr. Janney for the Council on Aging, as well as Ms. Dougherty and Ms. Lane Cho. They have all expressed interest, that they're very active members of the senior community here and really want to get to work and make sure that we have the programs and services for our seniors that they deserve. They meet once a month with the Police, the Department of Public Health and the Senior Center Director to kind of look at programs and services and make some recommendations. So the committee unanimously voted to reappoint all three, and so I hope the council does the same. So Mr. Janney, Ms. Dougherty, and Ms. Cho.
Thank you. On Counselor Crowe's motion to reappoint the three people that we stated, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I can certainly name those names again, but I think we're okay.
Yeah. And then we, we also met with Kevin Alkins. He's our Inspector of Animals. And Kevin had talked about his, he's been doing this job, next year will be his 20 years that he's been on, been on duty. We've all talked about all the times that we've had to reach out, and I think Counselor Seeca might have had the most recent with our turkey situation. You know, to reach out to Mr. Alkins, who's always been, been there and had a big support. I had turkeys too, yeah. The turkeys are overrun. The, so we, we again, you know, commend him for all his hard work, and the committee recommended that he be reappointed, and so I'll make that motion.
Thank you. On Counselor Crowe's motion to reappoint Kevin Alkins, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, congratulations.
So next we have our Director of the DPW, which we talk a lot about or talk to a lot, and he's been here for 25 years. September 10th was his 25th year at the, at the DPW. So again, we always reach out to him. He serves on a lot of ad hoc committees and his, he really is a wealth of knowledge. So the committee had a good, long conversation with Mr. Knox and recommend his reappointment. So I'll make that motion.
Thank you. On Counselor Crowe's motion to reappoint Robert P. Knox as our Director of DPW, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Congratulations.
So next up, we have Mr. O'Bri- these two other appointments are actually council appointments, not, not mayoral appointments, but Mr. O'Brien, who's also in the audience, is our city assessor. And actually, we need to move him along, says he has a lot of work to with DOJ that he needs to get done. So he's been on the job, he actually came on to be a help many years in 1986. And, yeah, so, excuse me?
1999.
99, I thought it said something about 86 before, but, so, so now he's our head assessor, and so the committee had a nice conversation with him just about where, where he sees the assessor's office moving, you know, to, to sort of operationalize a little more. And so the committee recommended that we reappoint Mr. O'Brien as our city assessor. Make that motion.
Thank you. On Counselor Crowe's motion to reappoint James O'Brien as our assessor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations.
And finally, we have Mr. Rannigan, who is also in the audience, as our city controller. He, Mr. Rannigan, as we all know, we really look towards him to make sure that we're, that we're using our money wisely. And, and he's actually with a very small staff. He really has done quite a lot of work, and we just added a purchasing officer in his, in his department, which he really thinks is going to allow him to do some more audits of other, other departments, which we think is really something that has been needed and something that's been recognized that it, that we should be doing that. And so now he'll be able to kind of look at other departments a little more closely. So we unanimously voted to, to reappoint Mr. Rannigan as our city controller, and I make that motion.
Thank you. On Counselor Crowe's motion to reappoint Charles Rannigan as our controller of the city of Malden, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations.
Okay, we next have a series of rules and ordinance. Shall I read them one at a time, or, or once? Okay. Rules and ordinance, Paper 365-18, be it hereby ordained that Chapter 8 of the Revised Ordinance of 1991 be amended to add a new Section 8.42.9 relative to DPW supervisor's salary schedule. Rules and ordinance, Paper Number 366-18, be it hereby ordained that Section 8.35 of Chapter 8 of the Revised Ordinance of 1991 be amended relative to the officer's salary schedule. Rules and ordinance, Paper 367-18, be it hereby ordained that Section 8.36 of Chapter 8 of the Revised Ordinance of 1991 be amended relative to specialist salary schedule. Rules and ordinance, Paper 368 of 18, be hereby ordained that Section 8.37 of Chapter 8 of the Revised Ordinance of 1991 be amended relative to clerk's salary schedule. Rules and ordinance, Paper 369 of 18, be it hereby ordained that Section 8.38 of Chapter 8 of the Revised Ordinance of 1991 be amended relative to unclassified salary schedules.
Thank you. On Counselor O'Malley's motion to receive the committee report, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Committee report is received. Counselor O'Malley for the committee.
Thank you, Madam President. These were voted out unanimously from committee. We do this every year. It is updating our ordinances to reflect what we've done in the budget. Two percent salary increase for, for our, for our employees. I would move adoption or enrolling. I would move to enroll.
Enrolling. I see no further lights. On Counselor O'Malley's motion to enroll, clerk will call the roll.
Counsel Anderson?
Yes.
Counsel Kamel?
Yes.
Counsel Condon?
Yes.
Counsel Crowe?
Yes.
Counsel Matheson?
Yes.
Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley?
Yes.
Counsel Seeca?
Yes.
Counsel Winslow?
Yes.
Counsel President Di Maria?
Yes.
If there's no objections, I would move to suspend the rules for the purposes ordaining. Clean up the docket.
Are we okay with that, everybody?
Second.
Wonderful. Okay, seconded by Counselor Anderson. Okay, we'll do a roll call on adopting.
Suspending the rules.
Suspend, suspending the rules for, excuse me.
Okay. Counsel Anderson?
Yes.
Counsel Kamel?
Yes.
Counsel Condon?
Yes.
Counsel Crowe?
Yes.
Counsel Matheson?
Yes.
Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley?
Yes.
Counsel Seeca?
Yes.
Counsel Winslow?
Yes.
Counsel President Di Maria?
Yes.
Move to ordain.
Second.
Okay.
Okay, Counsel Anderson?
Yes.
Counsel Kamel?
Yes.
Counsel Condon?
Yes.
Counsel Crowe?
Yes.
Counsel Matheson?
Still yes.
Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley?
Yes.
Counsel Seeca?
Yes.
Counsel Winslow?
Yes.
Counsel President Di Maria?
Yes.
That passes.
Wonderful. Great. Next order of business?
Okay, next have committee reports on various licenses and renewals in outdoor parking. I'll do the outdoor parking first. Reggano's Inc., 1081 Fells Way, Malden, 20 spaces, that's a renewal. Reggano's Inc., 1152 East Nav, Malden, 10 spaces, that's new. Emmanuel Baptist Church, 20 spaces, Malden, oh, excuse me, 27 spaces, that's new. And then 11 Charles Street Realty, 25 spaces, that's new.
We're gonna do the new first?
Counsel Seeca needs to recuse herself from two of these.
Okay, Counsel Seeca.
I would like to recuse myself from both Reggano's opening permits.
Certainly. Seconded?
Oh, he, he is my uncle. In case anyone was wondering.
Yeah, we're gonna do a roll call on that.
Okay.
Counsel Anderson?
Yes.
Counsel Kamel?
Yes.
Counsel Condon?
Yes.
Counsel Crowe?
Yes.
Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel Matheson?
I don't know.
I'm gonna go with yes on this one.
All right, all right. Counsel O'Malley?
Yeah.
Counsel Seeca? Okay, Counsel Winslow?
Yes.
Counsel President Di Maria?
Yes. Okay. So on Counselor Anderson's motion to receive the committee report, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Counselor Anderson for the committee.
We'll just move that we grant these four that are before us. It all was handled in License Committee and approved, and would ask that we grant.
Okay, on Counselor Anderson's motion to grant these petitions, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Those petitions are granted.
Okay, I have a Class 2, Gary Garchuk, DBA Gary Auto Sales, 160 East Nav, 18 cars, that is new.
Receive the committee report.
Thank you. On Counselor Anderson's motion to receive the committee report, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Counselor Anderson for the committee.
Move granting.
On Counselor Anderson's motion to grant that petition, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The petition is granted.
Okay, I have two applications that were denied, and it's a Class 2, Eli Gary's Automotive, DBA Eli's Garage, 12 Beach Street, 15 new cars. And then I have Ideal Park Limousine Service, Inc., 61 High Rock Road, one car. They were denied at the committee.
Receive the committee report.
Thank you. On Counselor Anderson's motion to receive the committee report, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Committee report is received. Counselor Anderson for the committee.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. These applications were reviewed in committee and denied based on information that we had about the capacity in both cases for the number of parking spaces. We have since gotten additional information that I'd like the committee to have a second look at. Counsel Kamel has won in his ward, the livery license, that the petitioner has, has a place to park that we weren't given that information. And the second one with the 12 Beach Street, the petitioner has another plot plan that he has submitted to our building commissioner for him to review. So whether or not that meets muster or not, we don't know yet, but I'd like to at least send these two licenses back to the License Committee for further discussion.
Okay, we do have a light on the floor. Counselor Matheson?
Thank you. I just remember in the committee process, we voted unanimously that pending that rejection, we would refund the applicant's fee. Has that happened, Mr. Clerk?
No. He, he did come in, and I asked him for his council check, and he's yet to bring it in.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay, so Counsel...
On the motion to refer back to the License Committee?
Thank you.
All those in favor?
On Counselor Anderson's motion to refer those two back to the License Committee, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, those two will go back to the License Committee.
Okay, I have a committee report from public property, Paper 367-17. Order that city council determine whether or not to grant to owners of properties number 19 through 43 of Gordon Street totaling six parcels, non-exclusive, revocable easements to pass and repass over city-owned land identified as parcels number 091-776-612 through 106-776-615 on Goodwin Ave. for the sole purpose of accessing their existing driveways, provided that said property owners agree to maintain said easement at their sole cost and expense.
Actually, I'm gonna, I'm gonna refer to the chair, and then we're going to go to Counselor Murphy, but Counselor Kamel first?
Great, thank you. So first of all, you should all have a copy of the temporary easement agreement in your folders. It is in the folder, everybody's folder. I'm sorry. Move to receive the committee report.
Move to, receive the committee report. Counselor Kamel for the committee.
Move to... There we are, I think.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Counselor Kamel for the committee.
So you should all have a temporary easement agreement in your folder. The original wording covered many properties. The core issue here is there was a strip of land. There's actually one, one property on Gordon Street that has its driveway coming out through the back onto Goodwin Avenue. That was the original intent here. We are actually, so I'll read the recommendation. The committee recommends that this paper be reported out favorably with the following amendment, that the present language be stricken and the following inserted in place thereof. Order that the mayor be authorized to sign the attached temporary easement in favor of Samuel Ruth and Sage Ruth for use of a portion of city land abutting the property known as and numbered 33 Gordon Street. So there's just a small strip of city-owned land. They've agreed, this is a revocable easement, they've agreed to maintain the property, and it's just so that they have an official okay from us that they can continue to have that driveway there. This is not gonna, it's not a sale, doesn't transfer ownership, and it doesn't allow any further driveways. I will defer also to Counsel Murphy, who's worded as to fill in any other detail.
Thank you, Counsel Kamel. Counsel Murphy?
Well, Counsel Kamel, you actually cap- captioned it all perfectly. The one thing is, there is actually more than one driveway. This is really the only person who's ever had an issue with passing and repassing. They're new to Malden, they've been here a couple of years, and they're just uncomfortable with the fact that they have to drive over this little piece of city land. It's a, it's probably about two or three feet, but the driveway's been there for ever, and that's the way they cross and recross to get into their, into their property. And that's the way they cross and recross to get into their property. They do not have a driveway on Gordon Street. So the whole access to the house is through this. And they, you know, there were some talk, people did talk about, you know, did we want to sell this land? And I don't want to sell it because I do have plans at the bottom portion of it to create at some point in the, hopefully in the near future, a little sitting area, a little pocket park on this temporary piece of property. So that's the goal. This is a win-win as far as I'm concerned for not only the Ruths and the city, but for everyone who walks up and down Goodwin from going to the tee because they have agreed to shovel in the winter and keep the property up so it will be good for foot traffic. So I would hope that you'd all support this. Came out of the Public Properties Committee, I believe you said, you know, unanimously. So we would hope that, you know, the council members would support this.
Okay. No other light? Oh, Counselor Winslow?
Yeah, I do plan to support this paper, but as, you know, one of the things in terms of easements, I did take a long time negotiating easements for the city related to the bike trail. And I know the MBTA was a very tough negotiator. And in terms of what they did was, they did require insurance in situations like this. And I mean, I also wonder our overall policy when we're doing easements in terms of financial compensation. I'm going to support this, but just something to bring up with the Public Property Committee and our city, our legal office, that, you know, if there's a more significant easement, we should be looking at those type of things in terms of, you know, financial compensation as well as insurance provisions that would require the easement holder to have insurance because right now there's an indemnification. But, you know, if that homeowner is bankrupt or some other situation, if someone gets hurt on that property, the city could be liable. So I think that's just something, I don't want to hold this up. I know there's been a lot of work. This is a small bit of land. But just something to be aware of if other easements come before us, we should look at those type of things of like saying insurance as well as looking at financial compensation. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Winslow. Counselor Kamel?
Yeah, I just want to thank Counselor Winslow for those points, both good points in terms of overall strategy. I just do want to stress that this is a very narrow strip of land. You know, it's, you know, one sidewalk. So I do acknowledge those concerns. I just, I would stress that this is very, very small. And to ask the family for financial compensation was, didn't seem appropriate in this situation.
Okay, so on Counselor Murphy's motion to adopt, we're moving to adopt this? Okay. Seconded by Counselor Kamel, all those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, that order is adopted. Thank you. That's it? Wow. Great, okay. So we're going to move into personal privilege. The docket is clear. And I see several lights. We're going to go to Counselor Seika first.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to invite everybody to Malden's First Annual Public Safety Day. I have been working alongside Chief Finn from the Malden Fire Department for the last few weeks organizing this hopefully fabulous event along with the Malden Housing, Mass State Police, Malden Police, DPW. It's also going to be a touch of truck event. The kids are going to be able to go in the bucket truck and take a little ride up and down. We have pumpkin decorating. We have Third Alarm Wood Fire Pizza coming to serve everybody some free pizza, popcorn, inflatables. We got hamster balls. DJ photo booth from the Junior Aid. The Junior Aid is getting in on all the fun. We're going to have face painting by the Malden Girl Scouts. And State Police Ass and Dog is going to do a demonstration along with the firehouse. So it's sort of a way to kick off Fire Prevention Week. It's Sunday, October 7th, from 10:00 to 2:00 at the Linden Park, 29 Westcott Street. And we hope to see everyone there. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Seika. Counselor O'Malley?
Thank you, Madam President. I just would like to let the council know that on this Thursday, September 27th, from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m., Senator Jason Lewis, the City of Malden, the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, and the Mystic River Watershed Association will be having a Malden River Forum. This will be located at Rivers Edge Offices at 200 Rivers Edge Drive in Medford. If you'd like to go, you can RSVP to Senator Lewis's staff member, Emily Granoff, at emily.granoff@masenate.gov. Again, September 27th, 1:00 to 3:00 p.m., Malden River Forum. Aside from that, on Saturday, the 29th, at 8:00 p.m., Local Ward for Establishment, Pearl Street Station will be hosting a Family Feud Trivia Night. You can go online to buy tickets for that. Just Google Family Food Trivia, Pearl Street Station. Wednesday, October 3rd, there will be a community meeting for the Island Hill Neighborhood to discuss infrastructure, traffic, and other news. The Island Hill Neighborhood consists of Autumn, Kenmore, Rosemont, Wedgemere, and Fairlon Road. And then finally, or October 6th, which is a Saturday, at 8:00 a.m., St. Paul's Parish will host its annual flea market on their lawn at the corner of Florence and Washington Streets. And just a reminder for the committee members, we will be having a tree hearing, a tree meeting, a committee meeting after this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor O'Malley. Counselor Crow?
Thank you, Madam President. There's quite a lot going on in the City of Malden in the month of October. And I just wanted to, all the councils have the flyer, that the YWCA is actually doing a fundraiser on Friday, October 19th, at the Moose. It's going to be a murder mystery night with dinner. And so all, 100% of the proceeds goes right back into the programs that service women and families in the community. So I hope everybody is interested. Tickets are $50 unless you get a, reserve a table of 10, you get a discount. So it's only $400 for a whole table. So that's a pretty good discount. So I hope to see everybody there. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Crow. Counselor Winslow?
Yeah, today was voter registration day. I want to thank the Malden High Civics Club and other people who were out there in Malden today registering people to vote. And if you haven't had a chance to vote, you do have until October 17th. And actually, that, I think it's a Wednesday, that evening, Malden City Hall will be open late till 8:00 p.m. So you have, still have plenty of time to register for the November election. Also, just to let people know, we'll have early voting for this election. That's going to be starting on October 22nd. And it'll be in this building. More details to be filled in from the City of Malden website. But please, you know, voting is an important civic duty. Please register so you can undertake that important civic duty. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Winslow. Counselor Matheson?
Thank you, Chair. And I would just like to say, I love a good murder mystery. What a great idea, Counselor Crow. And for you residents of Ward 3 and other people that are interested in our parks, Patchell Park just got a little bit nicer. Patchell Park is one of these little community parks that's out of the way, right near the Melrose border off Glen Rock. Next to Patchell Park is a paper road. So when they originally designed our fair city, there were areas put in place for the eventual construction of a road that does not always take place. So there was a strip of land that was completely overgrown and used essentially as a dump by all the butters and whatnot. So with the suggestion of some residents and the help of the DPW and some of my mitigation funds, we went into this, what I'm going to say is one of the most disgusting areas that I've seen, completely overgrown with cinder blocks and every other imaginable piece of trash. And we completely cleared it out. The DPW took out a lot of invasive species and really leveled it out nice. That took us several visits. Mike's landscaping had gone in. They did a beautiful restoration with some mulch and they repurposed the area stone. And there's some nice areas there for sitting or picnicking or walking your dog or whatever you want to do in a park. But go on over and check it out. It's Patchell Park in Ward 3 off Glen Rock Ave. Beautiful area. We're very, very proud of the results. And our Public Works Director said he never saw the dollar get stretched so far. And that's what we aim to do, and we did a great job in this instance. Thank you all very much. Good night.
Thank you, Counselor Matheson. Counselor Anderson?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I was very pleased to have participated in a Malden River cleanup on Saturday. The river was cleaned, or at least along the banks of the river, on both sides from right behind Super 88 all the way down to Medford Street. There must have been at least 50 young people who were volunteering to pick up the trash and put it in bags. And we ended up, I think, moving like 76 bags of trash that we moved down to the DPW for them to dispose of. It was a great effort on the part of the High Rock, the church organization that was kind of the organizers of this activity. And it turned out to be a good day, and people were glad to see us down there. And it was a good adventure, hell by all. So I was proud that they had asked me to come and participate and glad to be there and saw great results. So here, here to the High Rock and all the volunteers. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Anderson. Counselor O'Malley for the second time.
Sorry, I forgot to talk about what I did last weekend. No, after I also participated in the cleanup of the river, we went on to Quorumley Park, where the Ward for Association in partnership with the city planted nine new trees. It was a great day, had by all. The volunteers were very helpful. And I just wanted to say my sincere thank you to the volunteers for helping with the tree planting.
Okay, and from the chair, give me one second. I wanted to announce that we, again, for our seventh year, our financial team has been awarded a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. So I didn't want this to go unnoticed. A big thanks to our treasurer, our comptroller, our assessor for doing a great job. So thank you. And on Counselor Seika's motion to adjourn, all those in favor? Any opposed? Meeting is adjourned.